Educating, Informing, Serving. TV, Keeping Government Honest.
Yeah, okay. It is 5:30 and I'm gonna call the Rockingham School Board meeting to order. Adjustments to the agenda? I just have a small wording here. So on Board Day, it really should read, "Adopt Roberts Rules of Order for Small Boards." Every board is supposed to...
Actually, the small boards are part of the Roberts Rules of Order. So if you're adopting one, you're adopting that.
Well, the thing to disagree, and I'm going to, that if you don't adopt the rules for small boards, then you are doomed to have the rather cumbersome protocols that you had, say, at a meeting where there have to be seconds. There can be amendments. The small board protocols allow the chair to make decisions or, frankly, streamline what...
And we followed them, but we can just add that in there, that the small, for small boards...
For small boards.
For small boards.
Is the wording that that should be.
The other thing I'd like to do is just indulge myself to update the board on the event at Saxon's River High School Elementary School today, but also on the AOE new masking. And I guess, I guess, yeah, 6A and 7A?
Sure. 6A would be Saxon's River. And 7A would be the mask. Anything else? All right. Communication and public comment. Susan Haskins, do you have your hand up?
Yes, I just wanted to call in. I also wanted to just give our perspective on the incident at Saxon's River Elementary School today. We have a fourth grader that attends Saxon's River Elementary School, and we are not pleased with the decisions that the administration made in regards to dismissing students without knowing for certain that there was gonna be somebody at home to receive the student, the bus students. So we received a robo-call at 1:50 to inform us that dismissal was gonna begin at 2:00. Students were bussed home, and my fourth grader was let off the bus and called me crying. One, because she was scared of the incident that took place at school. It was very scary for her to see water coming in through the ceiling of her classroom. She evacuated the building to be turned right around and say, "Nope." The water system tripped the alarm, so everything's safe. The nurse said that they could go back in prior to the fire department even responding on scene. From what I understand, it took 20 minutes for the fire department to respond to a school emergency call. And students were allowed back in the building, but they didn't want students to remain in the building because it's not safe to operate without a sprinkler system. But they kept them there until the buses came, and as of 3:30, from what I understand, there were still students in that building. So I had a phone conversation with Mr. Haas and just kind of expressed to him that I think we need to consider the age of the students when we dismiss. And I also think we need to ensure that parents receive that call because I didn't get it. I was in a meeting. It was only a robo-call. We did not receive an email as well. And so I did not learn of this until my nine-year-old called me crying from home, and I'm 30 minutes away. So I think we need to reconsider the evacuation protocols. Mr. Haas was not sure where Saxon's River would evacuate to. I think that should've been a consideration. When I went to school out there, we evacuated to Vermont Academy at one point because it was a place that we could walk to. So when considering the protocols, or at least looking into them, perhaps we could find a place that students could walk to in case we are in a situation where we need to wait for busing. So, yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any more comments?
If I could, actually. One other thing. I did receive a phone call from her bus driver, who is absolutely lovely and did what she did every single day, which is to drop her off at the end of the driveway. There's usually, though, somebody home waiting for her, and in this case, because they were dismissed early, there wasn't somebody there waiting for her. So the bus driver was distraught, called me, and apologized for, you know, dropping her off. She just thought she was doing what she did every other day. And I don't want this to be a reflection of the bus driver. The bus driver did what she is told to do every single day, which is to drop her off at the end of the driveway. My daughter also has disabilities that the school is aware of, but the bus drivers aren't privy to that information, and therefore, it was not a good situation for her to go from an emergency crisis situation to home alone. So by no means do I think that this should come down on the bus driver. My husband and I are just disheartened with the call made by the administration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. If not, then move on to the next, which is the reorganization of the Rockingham School Board. First, I move up is election of a chairperson. I guess I will entertain nominations.
I nominate Priscilla Lambert for chair of the Rockingham School Board.
I'd like to nominate Jim Paul for chair. I tried to look this up, if there was gonna be multiple nominations, so I didn't know. I mean, I guess the first question is, Priscilla, if nominated, would you accept?
Yes.
Jigs is nominated, would you accept?
Yes.
All right.
I'd like to make a comment if I could. This is a small election, there are only five votes. I would normally not throw my hat in the ring for a school board, but, school board chair, but in this particular interest, I think the taxpayers in Rockingham would like to know that they've got an independent mind as chair at this particular time, particularly with the confusion over finances and everything else. I don't have any conflicts of interest, or potential conflicts of interest. I was never employed by the school as a teacher or an administrator. I've certainly had a lot of experience. I've been on the Rockingham School Board longer than any of the other folks here, any of you. And I've served as chairs of boards of the school board. So I know the protocols, I know the rituals, I know the chain of commands, and I think for, at least for a year, I think it'd be a good idea to have that independence as your chair. So, thank you.
I've served on many, many committees this year with total transparency, and I bring everything to the board for its decision-making. I'm not sure that my other board member would do that, so that concerns me. There have been a couple times that I've wanted to bring stuff that he has not wanted me to bring for decisions, and I think it's up to the board to make the decisions and not me as the chair. I've served on a lot of committees, which has given me a lot of input into various different operations and done that. Most recent one is negotiations committee, which, from one standpoint, I knew more about the way teachers tend to negotiate, which kind of may have been unfair and wants that way, but that would be against my having been a teacher, not because I was a teacher. It gives me insight into the way the schools run. It gives me insight into the way the board runs, and I think I've come to a really good balance in doing that. I listen to my board members, I take what they want into consideration, and let them make a decision. Thanks.
I guess, gotta call a vote here. So...
I tried to look this up, Mr. Kivie, to be honest with you.
Well, I've been in your position.
Okay.
Most times, I think the way we ended up doing it was having slips of paper and putting them into a hat. I mean, that makes it a...
No pressure.
No pressure? No pressure. Yeah. Okay. I mean, it works fine. I do recall one time when we had to do it, I think three or four times before we arrived at a decision, but it wasn't here.
I want perfect paper.
Want a copy instead of a hat?
It becomes the IT of the rest of the...
Anything better than that?
Why wouldn't you just hand them to you?
That's the only person I know.
You want to do this or...
Totally partial.
Check the watermark.
I'm getting all the answers, but I don't know if I can use your address.
Gosh, I remember.
Oh, no, I'll do it.
So I have three votes for Priscilla and two for Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you for the consideration.
Thank you. Thanks very much for that. So, Madam Chair, I hand you the meeting.
All right. So the next up is the election of the clerk. Nominations for clerk. Megan Hasbroun.
I nominate Megan.
I was willing to pass it on. I'll be whatever you guys need, I'll be out.
Can I ask the clerk of my board members before we go on? The clerk and the assistant treasurer, we did those together. Can we do those together? The assistant treasurer is only if Kathleen Nethop was not available to sign something. I know on Tachan I was clerk, I never had to do anything. I don't, Megan's never had to do anything. So it's kind of just one that we could put together, and we did last year, so it's up to you before we go on, or we can just go for each one. What do you guys think?
Just go on.
If you want us to do each one separate.
I was asking if we should combine assistant clerk, I mean clerk and assistant treasurer together. Are you okay with that?
I'm okay with that. Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, so, Megan, is, Megan, Jigs, and you're okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
Okay, so you're okay with that? All right. So are there any other nominations for that position?
I move that we close nominations and let the superintendent vote for Megan for clerk and assistant treasurer in this new streamlined position.
Thank you, Chris, I appreciate that. Voting members to the WNSU Board. I've been on there and I'm familiar with it, so I'd like to continue. Megan, would you like to continue?
I would like to be an alternate. I can't commit. It's really some of those meetings hit at a hard time for me, so I'd like to be an alternate if someone can't go. If you can let me know, but I don't, I can't comfortably commit to that. I might let everybody down.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
We don't need a motion for this.
Oh, you don't need a motion.
No. Jigs, did you wanna be on there?
I would agree to serve, yeah.
Okay.
I'm happy to serve on that.
Chris, I'm questioning the conflict with some of the things you can't vote for on there with your situation. Is that...
I'm not married to anybody. I'm not financially connected to anybody.
But you're living it.
I think it's highly, I think you're out of order, Priscilla, in questioning someone that volunteered to do it.
I'm just asking him if he would have too many conflicts of interest. That's an appropriate thing to ask him.
The conflict that you have was, obviously, didn't prevent you from being the chair, so I think we lay off the conflict things, but frankly...
I'm just asking, you know, for it's not comfortable.
Yeah.
Okay, and Bill, how do you feel about what you, did you wanna be?
No, I think you have the people you need already.
Okay. All right. So we will have Jigs, Chris, Megan as first alternate, and Bill as second. Just in case, 'cause I know there were, there were, the last meeting, I was the only one that was there, which meant we could've had two other alternates, so if the other two members aren't there, we would need two.
You're actually supposed to, at a meeting before the SU Board meeting, appoint the person who's going to go in place.
I can cheer you.
Sorry. We went through this with alternates. My understanding is you can't have a standing alternate to the SU Board. You are supposed to poll the members before the SU meeting and say, "Is everybody able to come?" And then if somebody isn't, at that point, you appoint the alternate, you know, obviously.
Our board has run it the other way the last couple years. Before I was the chair, and that, that we did, the other members were the alternates, and so that's what I was going by.
I think, well, I understand. I don't understand the logicality.
If you're objecting to them being alternates...
Yeah, I think it was really statutory. You're not supposed to have alternates.
I can definitely research that.
We will research that and find out. Thank you, Andy, for doing that. Okay. The next thing is to appoint a truant officer.
I nominate Andy.
I want that job.
I'm going to do that.
We had the, previously, it's always been the Dallas Falls Police Department that's acted as truant officer.
Well, then I'll nominate the Dallas Falls Police Department. So the gentleman, the officer who, if I can speak my little bit, the officer who, I can't think of his name right now, Buckley, has retired. Retired mid, earlier this year, and I spoke with Chief Bemis, who, I guess Buckley has offered to stay on and act as a private citizen, to continue in that role, and then he would, if there was a need for an officer, a B officer would go with him, be contacted, but until this time, I had agreed that we would just keep that going. I think it's, you know, it's been working, so I would recommend that.
Okay, so...
Freeze up an officer also, you know, so that an officer isn't tied up doing that work, so.
So do you wanna...
I nominate Thaddeus Buckley.
Okay. Okay, so we'll appoint him as our truant officer unless there's an objection from anyone on the board. If we don't have to do, we do not have representatives to the technical centers. That's a high school thing. G is appoint warrants signers. Do I have somebody that would like to do that?
I will volunteer to do that. I can do that, too.
Okay, so we need one to sign.
Right. It's good to have two, but there's someone's a bad.
And a second one that would, you know, that's available also, so you guys, if there's two of you that are willing to do that, if you can kind of make sure that it gets done, that would be great. Okay, everybody okay with that? All right. Set time, date, and location of regular monthly meetings. We have had the first and third Monday traditionally, and last year, we moved from the first Monday being our primary meeting to the second, the third Monday being our primary meeting. Can I hear from my board members of how that worked and what their preference is on that? That way, it freed up some of the time for people to know what was expected of them.
So our standing meeting is always the third Monday, but as needed, we would decide as a group to throw it in on the following two weeks after, you know, the first Monday, right? So without a doubt, it was always the third Monday and the first Monday as needed.
Right. Is that comfortable with you guys, or do you want all of the people on the board, or do you feel that it should be the other way? Previous to last year, it was the first Monday that was the official one, and then the third Monday. But last year, we were looking at the budget coming out and the reports coming out, and because if we were close to the end of the month, that gave a little more time for us to get those reports, is why we moved it.
Absolutely. It should be, the principal meeting should be the third, because, you know, I know, obviously, one of the reasons I volunteered to come on the committee board last November was because of the chaos in the 20th Department, and hopefully, in the not-too-distant future, we'll be getting one to make actual statements. And to expect it the first Monday of the month is just not practical, so...
Right. Now, there are some months where there is a problem, and so we would have to then move to that first Monday. For example, April, it will be a problem. So we will have to have a meeting on the first Monday in April.
Why is April a problem?
Because it's during vacation. The third week is vacation, and we need the contracts before that. Contracts have to go out by April 15.
Oh, I see.
And so we need, we need that meeting to have discussed and make sure that we're on board for that.
Thank you, Chris.
So that one's crucial. The Labor Day weekend, that one always comes on a Monday, and so we have to adjust it that month, but we can adjust it. It's not, not crucial, and depending upon if the first of January came on a Monday, we would adjust, but... So, okay. And at 5:30, is that okay? That's what we've been holding. Okay. So that's established. I has established the newspaper to be used to announce school board functions and activities. We've had, last year, we voted for the reformer and the shopper, but I have not seen a lot of things in the shopper, so the shopper goes to everybody without cost, and so it's a good thing to have, excuse me, our announcements going out.
How often does the shopper go out?
Every Thursday.
Weekly.
We were talking about getting a month, I'm looking over at Nicole, who's trying to sneak out, but, 'cause I'm thinking, maybe I'm thinking of Westminster Graph and, like, their monthlies, right?
Their monthlies. The shopper is weekly, and you would have to have the agenda into them by Friday.
Friday.
So if it could just be time, location, we don't need to have the full agenda, unless you guys prefer to have that.
Right.
They're very good about publishing.
Their deadline is 12 o'clock on Friday, so it works with, it works with our numbers. It just gets a little more, you know, out there. Is that comfortable for everybody to have those two? Okay. I'm hearing positives. Okay. We already adopted committee assignments, building and grounds.
Sorry. We just have the adoption of Roberts Rules for Small.
Well, we didn't do that. I skipped over it. I was thinking, because we discussed it, we've done it. I apologize. Can I have a motion to adopt Roberts Rules of Order for Small Boards? Megan has the motion. And let me poll the members. Jigs?
I think we can do it once, can't we?
Pagan?
We're all here. Can we just say aye?
I'm calling the vote.
You want each person to vote?
Usually, we vote, yeah.
That's how we always have.
I thought when we were, I thought we've got people removed.
Well...
Aye.
We can, we can do it just as easy. Chris?
Yeah.
Bill?
Aye.
And I say aye, so that's passed. You're right, we could do it by a simple aye vote, but that way, you know, it's out there. It's just a simple vote. Committee assignments, building and grounds. Who would like to be on building and grounds? We had Jason before. Jigs, good.
I'm, who's that?
Chris, you too?
Sure.
Okay. Anybody else wanna be on that? Okay. And that's specific to our board because that is our buildings. Budget and finance, what we've done in the past for our budget was everybody kind of participated, because with five of us, you really need a lot of us doing that, so is that, I'm assuming that would be comfortable. But we also have a SU budget that we send representatives to, and I know, Jigs, you worked on that this year. Would you like to be on that?
Yes, yes. I would, I would have volunteered at the SU, but, yeah, I'd be happy to.
Well, we send the representatives, so we're just like the SU audit one that's down there, so we should appoint them. And I'll be on that, too. Teacher and support staff negotiations. I ended up serving on that because I had been the alternate for Jason Terry when he got done. One of their ground rules is that we not change people. Midstream, we have the teacher ones, we have a contract to bring to the board for possible ratification, but we also will be dealing with the support staff one. Since the rules are to not change, I'm willing to continue with that. I'm thinking that would be short, but I'm open to anything else anyone else wants to tell me. I mean, with our ground rules, I don't know. I know when we had one member resign, it was, "No, we can't replace." And the three members that are on it right now are still all here. So is that okay with us?
It starts first. I'm okay with that.
Okay with that? It's just the support staff at this point. Okay, so I'll do that. The recovery team representative, that was really busy last summer. That, I know I was doing like two and a half, three hours on a regular basis. It was like weekly for a while. Now, it's down to, we had a meeting in February, and we will have another meeting in April. April is the next one. So I'll continue on that because that's an ongoing thing that people are doing, but I would love to have at least one more person or more on there with me. Okay, Bill? Megan?
I was just cheering him on.
Okay.
You're doing what?
I was cheering you on, yeah.
Yeah.
Good for you, Bill.
Okay. All right, so we're okay with that. Anyone else really wanna? Also, community members, we need to encourage some community members to come on board with that as well, and I think Andy's doing some surveys or something.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're trying to engage our communities as best we can and to get them involved, so hopefully, we have a few more of those meetings coming up, so.
Priscilla?
Yes?
Can I ask a question? Community support, for you to, Andy or whoever, do we have, you can bring me up to date without wasting everybody's time, but could I get a kind of an idea of the status of our parent-teacher organizations at the three schools?
Yeah, we're, um, yeah, we're, we're, we're trying to engage our, our communities as best we can and to get them involved. So. Hopefully we have a few more of those meetings coming up. So.
Okay.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Can I ask a question on community support through you two, Andy or whoever? Do we have, and you can bring me up to date without wasting everybody's time, but can I get a kind of a, an idea of the status of our parent teacher organizations at the three schools?
Yes, and I, and that's a very good question because I've also had a couple of questions from the parents out there that would really like to get involved. I think, um, uh, at least a couple of them are middle school age parents. And so we need to, if we can get that information out there.
The principals update you guys at the next meeting. Is that okay?
Cause I think they, that would be a good complement to the recovery team having to handle that for the school.
And, and then if they can get more, maybe some new information out because there might be some new members now that we're hopefully opening up a little bit. Okay. Um, SU audit, I was on that, but I'd really like someone else to. I've been on a lot of committees. That, that was started to look at the problems in the, in the finance office. And.
How long is here?
Right, Jigs. And it, um, we got a consultant to come in and look at them and then she presented a report, but that was the first year. And not much has been done this second, this second year that I've been on that. Um, although we're finding out about a lot of the things in the finance office. So if you cover that, Jigs, that'd be great. Policy, um, we have actually the policy committee, just as an overview, we've done, um, a total of 18 of the policies, um, that we have been able to update. I was chair of that SU, um, policy committee. And we've done, done those. They're all, they're ready. There's, um, five more that are ready to put out there. Those are F1, F23, F24, C7 and C8. Those will go on the website and we should have those on the next board meeting to approve those. Those are important ones that Andy can, the F ones were ones that Andy needs to be able to do the grants. And there's, um, about five more, the C level ones, maybe six or seven D level ones. And one or two others to be able to at least have covered the required policies and update those for the current. The A was a new policy that we did also that's been out there, but we'll get the numbers to you for the next meeting. So on policy, I'd like to continue. And is there another member who would like to be on that?
Do you need one or?
Yeah, we really should have at least one more because what we did was we broke out the different required policies. I want one person bring the stuff to the meeting and then we could discuss it together and then we could.
If no one else is knocking each other over, it'll jump on there.
Okay, Megan down. I was thinking, Chris, you might be interested in policy, but, but maybe.
I was stepping backwards.
I noticed that.
I was waiting for you to say something.
Isn't enough policy in his life?
Well, and then, uh, what, these are the SU policies that we're trying to get through. And then we need to be sure that we've looked at our, our own Rockingham Board ones too. And that's something we kind of probably all, all can do together. So. Um, I know Bill also asked, um, earlier, I think I was listening to him about something about curriculum. Are we running up anything in curriculum at the SU level that you might be interested in as well?
Um, we are going to be, um, probably, um, you know, my goal was to try and get something going this year, but, it might, it might be next year of really having some, um, co- committee meetings, um, that are scheduled. Um, a lot of it is just finding, getting teachers with the ability, um, with time outside of everything else they're doing. But we, you know, we welcome, we're going to be having some standing committees to look at all those different things. So.
And so when we get those, we can bring them to the board and then appoint. It doesn't have, you don't have to be on the actual three people that are there to be able to be on a committee. Yes, Chris?
And I, I would, I would add, um, although curriculum is not the purview of the Rockingham Board, it's the SWNSU.
Right.
There are things like programming such at the school that are indeed are purview. So, you know, I'd say trying to be amazing. So if we thought there should be a robotics class.
Yep.
That's entirely within our purview and that, that's something that you would talk about in budgeting or before budgeting really. So that's an example of kind of.
Nuanced, like, like Westminster Run and Outdoor, they have a, a portion where they do a lot of outdoor, um, curriculum. And that's very specific to what they do that we might not do here.
Um, yeah, it's like, for example, I saw on, um, TV, the, the farm which is.
On the table, yeah.
Yeah, that one. I saw where they were, um, offering a, a life cycle of a chicken. And so what I, I just copied down the information because it was all free stuff supplied to the school. And I don't know, I'm, I'm not pushing it. I, I just, I did send, um, uh, the information to the principals, CC to Andy in case they were interested. Cause I thought, okay, that's something if they're interested, I don't want them to miss it out on. And it's not, you know, but if, if it adds to their curriculum grade, if it's not something they want to do, that's fine too. But it's just, you know, those kinds of things that, you know, we can kind of look at, decide on. Okay. So, um, we have new business for discussion and action, if any. Is that where we put, I don't remember. I tried to put down the numbers.
That's where I put, that's sorry. That's where I put Saxons River just because it was new. And it was just for discussion, just to update, um, you all. So, just as I put out, just before one o'clock, I got a phone call from, um, Mrs. Hazard that, um, a water, like the sprinkler in the attic, um, had, had sprung a leak and was, uh, water was pouring into the fourth grade classroom. And the potential for it to go into the third grade classroom. And so they were, they were working on it. The fire department had been notified. And so as you heard from, um, Mrs. Haskins. So just a, a few things, just to kind of set, uh, when, when a sprinkler system, um.
Fails.
Thanks. My words are just not there. Thank you. Um, fails. The fire alarm goes off immediately. And so the students left before any water was pouring into the classroom. So just to, um, get that representation correct. And so the students were outside. It just happened to be at the moment that there was a deluge also happening outside. So the kids were standing outside. So. And, and once building administration did determine that it was the fire system that had failed, they didn't use students back into the building to get them out of the rain really quickly. It did take 20 minutes for the, uh, for fire to, uh, get there. By the time I got up there, they were already mitigating, uh, wet vacuuming up. Uh, but water had gone from the attic into the fourth grade classroom, into the third grade classroom and was into the basement. So, um, it had, um, uh, the, the hole was about, what the fire department told me was about the size of your pinky. So it started out pretty small, but then it got pretty big. Um, and, um, so we had Hampshire sprinkler system out there, Hampshire Fire. Um, they are going to be out Wednesday, to do the replacement. They had to get the parts and whatnot. Um, we have SERPCRO coming out tomorrow morning to, um, begin looking at any mitigation that we need to do. We're probably, by assumption, just based on times I've dealt with this at home or in other buildings, um, we're probably going to have to open up the ceilings um, to see what's up there. The, the insulation is a wool, um, blown in insulation in the attic. Um, so that areas that got wet are probably going to have to come out. And, um, it looked like we might have one casualty with a smart board. We're not sure it was wet. So, um, I'm going to make the assumption, you know, water and electronics. There was, um, in both of the classrooms, right underneath the windows, there's a whole like, um, low bookshelves with materials in them all the time. They seem to be forgotten, the verdict. So it was, if you know Saxons River, it was towards the window side of the, of the, the outside area. And so, um, we, um, uh, Mrs. Hazard and I did discuss and, and made a determination based on, you know, a lot of kids were, were a little upset about what happened and, and also given that a lot of kids were wet from standing out in the rain and, um, was to try and move to, uh, to do, um, big kids home. And the fire department was, was saying, you know, you really shouldn't have people in here. There's no sprinkler system. Um, so we, um, we made a decision. Um, at the time we made the decision, we were told it might be a while for buses. So we made the call to begin the system. The buses actually showed up very quickly. As Ms. Haskins was bringing up, um, this hazard did go onto every bus and tell every bus driver not to let a student off and let the guardian was there. I think in the situation, given that the student gets off on a normal basis, the driver thought it was okay. So we're still following up on that piece. Cause we did have, uh, at least one student who came back on the bus because there wasn't a guardian there. So. And so, you know, um, but, you know, we'll review, you know, I think in any situation, we review kind of what you did and, and what can we do better, um, to mitigate those things. We are going to do, um, remote, um, learning tomorrow and Wednesday because we don't have sprinkler systems. I've applied, um, I, I'm waiting to apply for a waiver, um, from the secretary because if for some reason they can't fix it all by Wednesday, I don't want to have to go back in and add another day. I'd rather just do the whole thing at once. But I have notified the, um, the secretary of the situation. Um, the plan tentatively until we kind of really know everything is once the system is back up and, and we get the, uh, all clear to come back in the building is to utilize the art in the music room, put the third grade in. And so then we can just operate and then we can work on whatever repairs we need to do in those two classrooms. Stuff in the basement, which, you know, uh, didn't get all the way down. Uh, we have a lot of our foxless and panel, um, materials down there that, that the SU's invested a lot of money in. They did not get, appear to get some water on that. There was some other areas that they get some water, but doesn't seem to be done, you know, uh, too bad. But, you know, um, the, the staff at Saxons River did a, you know, like by the time I got up there, I mean, it was like, you almost would have thought you just, unless you saw the water dripping. Like he'd already gotten verted. I'd gotten everything out, you know, on the best he could. And he was really trying to slow the progression of going down. And, uh, the kids, you know, like I said, like it was very orderly when, when parents started showing up. It was, it was running real smooth. So, uh, my hat's off to them for how they ran it. So. It was the excitement today. So.
And was, was it a frozen pipe?
They didn't, um, so the fire did not think it was a frozen pipe. Um.
They could tell. I mean, it.
Yeah.
If you've seen a frozen pipe, you know.
Yeah. He, 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 he seemed to feel that it like he, as he explained it to me, he said it, it started small and then it would have just over with the pressure because those are pressurized. It would have, would have expanded. Uh, one other thing Bert did mention to me is the concern he has that, I guess that disrupts a lot of the sprinkler, you know, the system all over the place. And then a lot of times there's water that sits in the bottom of those pipes on a continuous basis. And so they rust from the inside. And so his concern is did this disrupt anything somewhere else in the system? So that's going to be something we're going to have to work with Hampshire to kind of go through and do that. So.
You know, the, um, when we had a problem at the high school, we had a sprinkler go. Remember that. We had to have an inspect the whole system because similar parts were getting ready to also go. So they had to be replaced as well. So I would say.
Yeah. So that's, then I think it could, Bert mentioned, I guess.
The whole thing.
I guess in the past, there were some other, like how he described it, sometimes rust will settle on the, on the pinhole and will actually keep it from leaking. And how he noticed it once before was there was some discoloration in one of the tiles and he went in and they found, you know, that section, cut it out and replaced it. So. But yeah, that's what we're going to have to do. And I, we actually had a sprinkler go at Central this year and that was a frozen pipe. So, and that was right over Ms. Kennedy's desk. Um, but it was pretty quickly mitigated. So it wasn't the same type of situation.
Do you have, um, any knowledge of how many students were put on buses? They needed to go that way. Cause I know it, the roll call said, you know, ask if parents wanted to pick them up. So.
I can find that. I don't know off the top of my, um, you know, you don't know. Ms. Hazard, could I, could I prompt you? Do you know approximately how many students took the bus?
Um, of course. I don't have the list written, but it was under 20. Um.
And while, while I pulled you into this, is anything else on that?
Um, no, I think you did a great job summing it up. It was certainly, you know, perfect storm today. And we did the best that we could do, uh, with the safety of the students in mind and at the, um, heart of all of our decision making. Yeah. So the students that took the bus were the students that primarily, uh, that's their mode of transportation home. And as Andy did say, um, I did board the buses and, um, give that direction to each of the drivers, uh, that if a, an adult wasn't present, then the student shouldn't be let off the bus.
Okay. And you said you had just, just one come back?
We had, um, one, uh, kindergartner who was not let off the bus until an adult was found.
Okay.
So the, the driver spent the time to, that's right. Didn't come back, but spent the time to find someone.
Definitely applaud that bus driver for us and thank them for caring for that student because that means a lot.
Who, who will coordinate the insurance aspect of this?
So I've already notified Visbit. Um, and so then, um, they, they pretty much come over and take over at that point, but I will continue to work with them on that, on that piece. So.
Great question. Thank you.
Question.
Yes, go.
Was the water running the entire 20 minutes between discovery and the arrival of the fire department?
It's my understanding that it was, yes. But Lori was on scene. So.
Yeah. I'm, I, I wish I had thought to time things and write down times, but, um, that was not, that was not my priority. But, um, the water, uh, started running shortly after we re-entered the building.
The reason I'm asking is I wonder what the protocol is if the custodial staff discovers that the water is running in and flooding the building. Do they have the authority to shut the water off? Or do they have to wait for the fire department to show up and then turn the water source off?
I don't know the answer off the top of my head. I'm trying to think of past when I've dealt with it at other buildings, what we've had to do, uh, but I can research that. What we found out is that the, the main shut off is actually in an outhouse. Um, it's not in the main building.
We have access to this outhouse.
We do, we do have access to it. So.
The other thing I was curious about, uh, in the event of another emergency, can we look at the option of again using Vermont Academy as a possible shelter? If the students are not able to go back into the building for whatever reason? Is that?
Yes, I can, I can, um, speak to that. And, uh, right before COVID hit, actually, we had pretty, uh, substantial plans in place with Vermont Academy coordinating, um, um, such a plan for our crisis, to, to fill out our crisis plan. Um, and had even gone as far as setting a date for a drill, um, and then COVID hit. So, uh, those plans were initiated. Um, and then as you know, uh, Vermont Academy last year, um, was a closed campus. They're on break right now. So really it was just like the perfect storm. Um, we were not ever able to carry out that drill, uh, that we intended to, but it is, um, on our list of to do things.
I do.
Yeah. And with them going on, they're on break. They, their last, uh, day with students was Friday. And so with them gone this week, that would have been a harder thing to actually coordinate today as well for, for them. So.
But I, I think that's a discussion we need to have with VA. That in the, if they're on break and we have an emergency, are we able to access their facility? So.
That's a little hard. Because actually it would be a better time to be able to have to go in. Because actually it would be a better time to be able to have to go in there with, with their own students and, and we're not in dealing with it with no other students are there, but, because their cafeteria is really, really a good sized area, okay. Are there any other questions from the board, for Laura or for Andy? Okay, all right, um, and under, and there's no other new business? Anybody else? Okay, um, 7A, um.
Yep, just, just wanted to update, um, so on Thursday, um, the governor and the secretary announced, um, that as of March 14th, uh, the A O E will be rescinding all of its, um, recommendations, uh, regarding masking, um, and COVID protocols. Um, we're still waiting because there's supposedly a memo coming out, um, probably tomorrow, uh, afternoon. But they wanted to prepare us, um, March 14th.
14th.
So that's Monday, March 14th.
Next Monday.
Um, so we had kind of anticipated this, um, prior to break. Um, and so we actually, uh, our school counselors and nurses and our clinicians met on Monday during our professional development to really just start having a conversation about, you know, we have students who, um, are going to have some anxiety around taking their masks off. Um, we want to also make sure that, um, we're getting out ahead of nobody getting shamed or taking their mask off or for wearing a mask because, um, we want to, you know, it's a choice at this time. Um, we met today, uh, the nurses and I met today to kind of just start, um, looking at our plan and, and start kind of how we massage it and, and work through it. Um, I've asked each building, uh, to me with their task force to, to kind of talk about each building because each building has had a little different approach to it. Like here at the middle school, they've had no visitors while students in, in the building. And so we didn't think ripping the Band-Aid off, so to speak, is the best way to go. And so that team's going to meet and look at protocols of how they're going to move towards, dare I say, normalization of a lot of people. I mean, but they are going to have a, um, an event, going to be their first event this, uh, I think Thursday. Uh, we're having, um, they're on vaping here in the building after school hours. So it's, you know, that, that's a first step, um, because we haven't even allowed that. Um, but so, you know, we're going to look at, you know, we're, we're going to recommend that people wear masks. We're not going to mandate, you know, that, that's, that's one of our things that we're talking about. Um, the other thing is, you know, if a student is symptomatic at school, we're going to contact home and then we're going to recommend that, you know, if the student's well enough to continue to stay in school, you know, kids have burning noses sometimes and, but that's a symptom of something, um, that they wear a mask while they're at school during that time, um, you know, we'll, we'll talk in turn to that, um, point. Um, but again, working towards that normalization, um, the, uh, the secretary also, um, noted that the mask, uh, the rescinding of the masks is on buses also. So, um, so as of March 14th, it'll be an option to wear a mask on a bus. Um, he also notified us that any, um, testing programs will be, um, sunsetted at some time in the future. Um, so that's our assurance testing, the test, um, test at home, uh, program. So they will continue to provide us tests for our school nurses to use as a diagnostic tool. Um, but it sounds like we're not going to be getting the, the plethora of tests that we were getting. Probably the, the big pieces of it. Um, the, the only other thing that seems, and, and this is why we're waiting a little bit, there's seen, if you go on the website right now, it's still got all the old stuff up and hasn't been updated yet. Um, but one of the things that, um, the recommendations is if you do test positive for COVID, you, you stay home for five days and then if you, after five days, if you're feeling well enough and, you know, you're not having symptoms, then you can return, uh, to school, um, and you're supposed to wear a mask for five days. So it's getting into that policing, you're telling us, area, so we're trying to, uh, wait and see what, um, what guidance the A O E, um, might add for us on that piece.
How are you, um, addressing for parents? Because, uh, we had about 50/50 when we took the survey last summer that wanted masks and that didn't want masks. Now that we're looking at taking the masks off and not having those in the schools, we're still going to have some parents that are concerned about having their child, um, there and the possibility of getting COVID. Do you have meetings set up to address that with them and help them feel more comfortable? Or, you know, what is set up for them? Because at this point with the governor taking it away and us following the protocol and the recommendations by the state, um, our board has given the directions that, you know, we won't have masks as of next Monday. Not that we're wanting to tell anybody not to wear them because they are welcome to wear them. Um, but I'm just wondering how you're going to address that with the parents that are concerned.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's why we put that, um, information out immediately on Friday, um, with the typo, uh, because we wanted to get it out as fast as possible. Um, but, um, we could definitely set up like a town hall meeting kind of thing. Uh, we hadn't planned on that, um, you know, um, we, we really feel strongly we can't get into the, you know, as I say, the policing, that if a parent wants their child to wear a mask, then the parent needs to relay that to their child. Um, but for, you know, for us that to try and keep track of these six kids who are supposed to be wearing their masks and these, you know, it's like, like kids are supposed to come during the winter time with a knit hat, right? You know, to go outside. If they don't, if I give them one, we'll, we'll do our best to try and honor parents' wishes, but, um, really the, the A O E really distressed the desire to get back to doing the business of leaving school, so, um, but.
Andy, I, I think the, uh, I, I agree with you on the policing thing, but I think what I would hope is that, uh, whatever guidance you provide to parents, that it applied to all three of our schools. Okay, that we don't have one policy in Saxons River and another one in Central and another one in middle school. Let's make sure that all three schools under our jurisdiction, uh, have the same policy. And I think the, uh, you know, just in the message here, the, uh, what I heard you say is that, uh, we're going from a mandate of masking to the option of masking. And I think the, and then I heard Priscilla mention about no more masking. So I think, you know, I think the, if it's optional, we got to make it clear to people that yes, if you want your child to wear a mask, recognizing that we're not going to police it, we're not responsible for that, but you are absolutely entitled to have your child come to school with a mask. And, and, and so I think, uh, to me, I don't know about town hall, but I, you know, I, I think to me, uh, having some kind of a, of a written communication that goes out to our parents, uh, would be, uh, would be appropriate.
And that's exactly what, I'm just waiting for this update from the A O E because I don't want to keep putting out any information and, and, but also want to get it out before Friday. Um, I think exactly when I put out the information on Friday, I had a parent come back and say, because I think I used the term mask optional and they, so they said, well, what's mask optional? Does that mean that I have a choice if my child wearing a mask or not wearing a mask? I said, that's exactly what they did, so, um, I, I think the, the other piece, when I talked about the protocols for each building, when we're talking, so certain buildings might be, have the capacities, like the high school, because of the meetings that they need to have with, with parents and stuff like that, haven't had visitors come into the building, but like here at the middle school, they haven't had visitors come in. So it's more of the, the, the workings of the building on, on their capacity and how they can move people safely. Um, but as far as how we're going to respond to, um, the, you know, the, your change in the mask and the change in testing protocols will be the same for all of our buildings, so. But I, each principal knows their building, like how, what can they manage? Can they manage having people come in and going out of their building? I, I gotta, you know, rely on the principals a little bit to know, you know, what they can, what they can capacity, you know, have capacity for.
Right. Any other questions? Okay, um, since this is an organization meeting and I should have added this to the talk, but, um, there was, and with all the changes in the board, we had a, a lot of, of elections this year. Normally what should happen is we would have one three-year opening and one two-year opening each year. And we are set up for that to happen next year. There would be a three-year opening and a two-year opening. Um, because Bill's finishing out a term that would be three-year, that will be a, uh, two-year, you're finishing out a two-year, that would be a two-year seat next year. And Megan is finishing a three-year term, so that would be a three-year seat next year. So we will have a three-year and a two-year and that will happen consistently down the way. Did I explain that well enough or do you have questions? Okay, is there anything else that this board wants to take up as far as anything that we can, we can add being a small board, yes, Chris?
Being a small board doesn't mean you can just add things onto your agenda.
No, but if, if they want to, if you're going to.
It is a disservice to the community to be adding things onto an agenda that people don't have a chance to. First of all, we prepare for, Andy prepares for, and the public gets to weigh in. So I would really like you to limit the changes in addition to.
We added those changes and explaining the term was important, so, um, that's.
But we could have done that next time, right?
This is the reorganization meeting, so this is the appropriate place for it, okay?
But then you should have added at the beginning of the meeting.
Let's, let's move on, okay, thank you.
You know.
All right, um, let's do director's comments, Jigs?
Well, I just wanted to clarify, uh, that I didn't realize that I, I had any role in setting agendas for this board. Uh, and, uh, but, uh, Priscilla claimed that I did and I, uh, as I said, I, uh, that's not my role and, uh, I've never done that and I never intend to do that, so, uh, anyway, uh, other than that, I, I appreciate, even though I was, I wasn't opposed, I, I appreciate anyone that voted and, uh, uh, thank you very much.
Chris?
Yep, also wanted to thank all the folks that turned out to vote and, uh, as I've heard both of you do before, I want to encourage people to get vaccinated, for parents to take advantage of these clinics that are being held around and about and available at the drugstores, uh, just on a walk-in basis. Please, you know, get your kids vaccinated and yourselves vaccinated. It's, it just brings you peace of mind to do it, uh, and everybody will be safe then.
Bill?
Could you ask Megan first?
Okay. Megan?
Um, just thank you to the voters of Rockingham for passing our budget and electing our members. Um, yeah, that's it for me this week.
Bill?
Uh, just that I'm grateful to be on the board, filling a vacancy, doing something worthwhile. I look forward to a very productive year for our students. And I'm hoping that we are able to foster more parental involvement in our decisions and more parental reflection on, uh, what we do, what we teach and how we teach it and how we prepare their children to be productive citizens of the United States. Thank you.
Um, me, I want to say, um, we're able to have five-member board. I, um, very pleased to work with Chris and Bill as members and with Jigs and Megan as returning members. Um, I'm looking forward to a really good year and some really good positives, so I'm hoping this board works really well together and that we can solve the issues that face us. Hopefully, this board has had to face tremendous issues in the last couple of years and hopefully now we're headed towards some kind of, so we call it normalcy, that's what we hear in the news and that it will have an easier time and, and be a lot smoother for those new members that are here and for the us that have been here. Okay? Be kind to each other. I usually finish with that because that's an important issue that kind of you can be that kind of, just kind of generates and adds capacity to everybody. David's next meeting.
I, I was going to ask, um, because I think the next meeting right now is the 21st. If the board want to entertain, uh, as much as, I don't need another meeting, um, but a meeting sooner than that to discuss the teacher, um, the central teacher, um, contract and, and ratification.
Okay.
Do the 14th?
Yes, the 14th is the high school.
We do it before, I mean, it's just the high school.
Oh, that's right, it's the high school.
Because they do second and fourth, we do first and third.
And high school does 6:30, so theoretically, if you guys want to do 5:30, but it's a lot of.
Is, is it important to do before that since the S U can't meet until the 23rd anyway? So they can't, they can't approve it till 23rd?
Yeah, that's, that's perfectly fine. I just, um, I had the advice of our legal was to get it done as soon as possible, but, um, uh, that, that first meeting will actually be the ratification meeting for the board of the S U, of the, the organization of that board also.
Right.
So that's the 23rd of March, the S U.
23rd is the S U.
So. So we can keep it on the 21st.
Why don't we just go down to 21st?
If you really feel it's important and the members are willing, I, I mean.
No, that's fine. Okay, so I, I'm looking for another meeting, I'm just trying to, going on the advice of our legal, we want to get it done as soon as possible so that it's all, you know, um, we can leave it on for the 21st and make sure any agenda.
So we'll just meet the 21st?
Yeah. Okay, I apologize for that.
And I imagine that'll be an executive, an executive session.
We would need a one for personnel, yes, because until it's all ratified by all the boards, it probably should, should be within an exec session. And also, um, please get agenda items to me that you would like to see on the agenda, um, the previous week, so that those can be because, um, I would be setting the agenda on the 17th or 18th, so if you can get them to me later.
We are posting on the 17th.
Okay, posting on 17th, okay. Okay.
We're just doing that because we're, we're, we're trying to do that because there are a lot of last minute adjustments and numerous times we've had to post numerous agendas, so we want to just have a date, hard date to say, this is when we're doing it. Kind of forced people's hands a little bit, but I mean, honestly, I think it's also just for sanity purposes, so.
So can I back that up? Is, is to get those to me by the 15? If you have any agenda items that you want me to add, I'll also send you a reminder notice that please get agenda items to me by the 15. Okay, if there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, Chris has the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Say none, then adjourn.